All right, all right, all. So Jay Kelly here. What I'd like to do is call the Board of Selectmen meeting open for Tuesday, March 24th, 2020. So I think, I think, team, this is our first. I know we had a joint meeting with the Board of Health on Friday, but technically, this is our first ever virtual Board of Selectmen meeting. And just to let the audience know, it was Governor Baker kind of... This is actually 7:10. Our next order of business is 7:10, so why don't we give it a few minutes? What I want to talk about, I don't know if we can jump down quickly, maybe to make, let's try to, let's jump down to Town Manager. We have a council invoice that's requiring approval?
Yes, we do. If I may, Mr. Chairman, we have a town council invoice and the amount took $3,527.66 for the time period of June, February 16th through February 29th, and I'd ask the board to approve.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. C M R Stronach.
I have a second from Mr. Crapman. Again, let's do a roll call vote. So why don't we start? I'll try to, I'll try to do the same bad in order. How about Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Crapman? Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
I vote, Chair votes aye as well, so 5-0. All right, Mr. Montori, I don't know if we want to jump. So we have a couple of things on the new business here. We have COVID-19 update, and I think Mr. Crapman wants to touch upon some of the social media stuff. So, Mr. Montori, do you have a few seconds here? Maybe we'll just try to do a very high level overview for the community as far as just general COVID-19 updates?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, since the last time we spoke, we've made some more changes in regard to town operations. But first and foremost, I want to say that there have been no changes to public safety operations. Those continue as they always have. In regard to town operations themselves, town offices are operating on skeleton crews right now. Anyone that has the ability to work from home is working from home, but we are still addressing any residents that call the offices or call for any service. There are people in various town offices. If any town office does not have anyone in the office, calls have been voted, so calls will be answered. The DPW is working on a skeleton crew, and they are answering essential calls and emergencies. So they're operating if residents have any issues. Senior Center is staffed to provide Meals on Wheels and to provide transportation to any seniors that need transportation. They can call the Senior Center. Obviously, if there's any online business that needs to be done, we urge residents to go to our website. The library is staffed. They're responding to any online requests and any individuals who want service through the library. They can call or use the online services. They're staffed with a skeleton crew also. So we have scaled back staffing to minimize and mitigate the chance of any problems with employees, but we are providing service to the residents, so they can contact us by email or by phone. That's where we stand at the moment.
Okay, very good. So what I want to do is let's do a quick roll call. Any questions from the Board? Or from Ms. Stronach? Any questions directed to Mr. Montori? I think you were good, Ms. Stronach.
You're on mute. She's on mute.
C M R, you have to unmute your screen.
I'm good.
Ms. Stronach? Okay, okay, very good. How about Ms. Wellman?
Yeah, I wanted to know, Mr. Montori, if our first responders have the, all of the equipment that they need, if our health workers have the equipment that they need, and if you've been receiving, are people reaching out to you to volunteer to drop things off or to volunteer for different services in the community and kind of how you're organized around that?
Sure. So, right now, we are equipped properly, but obviously, we can use more protective gear. The State Representative, David Robertson, has been very helpful in reaching out to MEMA to get us more protective gear, which some will be sent to us, so that has been good. So at the moment, we seem to be okay. People have reached out to volunteer, and we've taken names when people have reached out to us. Right now, we haven't needed any. Meals on Wheels needed some assistance, but staff in various departments stepped up to help deliver Meals on Wheels. So we're keeping a running list, running list of individuals, and as issues come up, we may reach out to them. But right now, we've checked on all the seniors that are home. It needs to be checked on. Calls made every day. We may bring in some volunteers to help there. But so far, so good. Everyone seems to be okay. We did receive some calls for food, which we were able to do from our Meals on Wheels delivery. There was some excess produce and perishable goods from the schools that we took control of at the Senior Center, at the Senior Center, that were giving out to seniors and others who needed. We gave it to some of the senior, senior living areas and housing authorities. So we're addressing as much as we can, but any volunteers can reach out to my office, the Senior Center. We'll put them on the list and use them as we need. Right now, everyone seems to be doing okay.
Thank you.
All right, very good. How about Mr. Crapman?
Richard just answered a number of my questions that I had. I was wondering what we were doing with the food at schools and if we were distributing to those in need. So that was one of my questions. You answered that already. I know I've seen a number of people that have been on social media volunteering, businesses that have been coming forward, offering masks, especially the 125 mask that I know we're in need of. I know we've been talking with school nurses and seeing what we've done and what we've been doing. So it seems like you have everything on order, but the best way, obviously, is to reach out to Town Manager, who's in there to do that. I know I've seen a number of people from the Selectmen Board and Board of Health and other people going around trying to get much needed supplies. So, Richard, they're all coordinating through you?
Yes, so far, everybody's coordinating through me, or Susan Sawyer, or Nicole Hutchins down at the Senior Center also. So they should reach, reach out to any of us, and then we'll all communicate and coordinate together.
Okay, that's excellent. Great job, as usual. Thank you.
All right, how about Mr. Brian Dick?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chair, than that Mr. Montori's been doing a fantastic job updating the board daily, multiple times a day, usually four or five times a day. So I appreciate that. And all my questions have been answered on those updates, so I have nothing to add. Thank you, Mr. Montori, for the updates, constant updates.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'll just kind of chime in last. I have more of a comment, and it's directed not only to Mr. Montori, but, Richard, to every single department head, every single town employee here has stepped up. We haven't missed a beat, albeit a skeleton crew. What's the word? I think the word now is fluid. I say subject, subject to change. Everything's subject to change based on these unprecedented times. So I can't thank you enough. I know I spoke with a few, with a few cops and a few firemen, and they're saying, Jay, we're just doing our job. It's like, what do you need? How can we help? And, you know, it's just amazing how the, all the town employees have rallied. So shout out to you, Mr. Montori. Like I said, every single town employee has really shined here during, during this crisis. So, so I thank you, and team, for that.
Thank you.
That's really good.
All right, why don't we, what we'll do now is, for the residence section, I know we have a few of, I know Mr. Dorian's on and Jason's on. So for the residence section, maybe, maybe Brian Dorian, if you could just jump in quick before we get to the residence section. Because again, this is, this is only for our board, but for the residents. And listen, we're going to have some glitches here. This is our first ever virtual meeting. But Brian, Mr. Brian Dorian, what's the best way for residents, if they want to, to call, to provide a public comment under the residence section?
We've lost Brian.
Okay, well, we'll come back to it. I want to make sure that we put the number out. And just for the residents, for those that are listening... All right, I'm going to try to pop that up. So it's under the, not under the chat, under the notes section?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, let's see when we get to the residents. Maybe we'll watch some more time. So why don't we jump into business now? Actually, it's 7:12. Why don't we jump in? Really, the, the crux of this meeting was pretty simple. Obviously, we have two, two, two major events coming up.
Sorry to interrupt. It's Jason. I just wanted to give you that phone number.
Go ahead.
So for the residents, they can call... Yep, so it's 781-565-8134.
I just put it into the chat.
All right, I'll just call it out one more time. So the caller number for residents is 781-565-8134. Again, 781-565-8134. I almost sounded like a, like a radio person. Okay. All right, we have two major orders of business here that we really want to cover. One is the annual town election, which is only heck, you know, April 4th, a few, a few short weeks away. We also want to touch upon the annual town meeting based on all the events. And again, that was, that was scheduled for May 4th, 2020. So, Mr. Montori, why don't we start with the annual town election for April 4th, and kind of just highlight to the residents, you know, we've had a lot of discussions. I said earlier, everything is fluid, subject to change, you know, as we get through, as we get through this together. So what's the latest on the annual town election, and what's your recommendation?
So we have been waiting for legislation to pass through the House and the Senate, and for the governor to sign to allow cities and towns to delay their local elections in an easier format than the current statute allows. And that happened, actually, late yesterday afternoon. Legislation was passed allowing cities and towns by vote of the Board of Selectmen to delay their local elections. And based on that, I have had discussions with the town clerk, who's been following it very closely, and based upon the time that she needs to prepare for the election, voter registration, and other things, we're recommending that the local election be moved to May, Saturday, May 16th, 2020.
Okay.
Mr. Montori, just for the record, that was May 16th, 2020, correct?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay. All right, let me open up to the board for questions. We'll start with, how about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. So, my question, I know this kind of, this actually has more to do with the town meeting portion, which we're going to get to in a minute, but we don't have a moderator, and so the election's going to give us a moderator. And so will that impact? Do we need a moderator to make an adjustment to the meeting? So that's one thing to... The other question I had is, is May 16th going to be, do we have the opportunity to, I hope not, but push it further if we need to?
You broke up in that last, middle of that last question.
Will we be able to push the election out further after May 16th, if needed?
Yes. We will be. If we need to be, we can make another vote.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, very good. How about, how about Mr. Crapman?
All right, I just wanted to, are we coordinating the proposal, new date of the elections with other cities and towns around us, or is that, or is it just something that we selected?
No, this is, if I may, Mr. Chairman, this is specific to us. We're not coordinating it with any other towns. They all work on their own dates. We're a Saturday election. Some are on Tuesdays, different days. So we're just doing our own.
I didn't know, because of Secretary of State's office being involved, that they were looking for us. They thought it was not coordinated. So I know they have to certify votes and do things like that. And I know it's going to be, you know, something, it's a change, that's all. I was just wondering if they were looking for towns to work together to try to do this.
No, we hadn't heard that. They left it up to each individual city and town to do that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. I just, obviously, it's, all the cities and towns around us are going to be changing their dates due to the crisis, and I think it'll be hard for the citizens.
Just to follow up on earlier question from Ms. Wellman, if we do decide to postpone the election again, we need to make sure it's 20 days prior to the new date of the election. As long as we're within that timeframe, we should be okay.
Okay, very good. And like Mr. Montori said, I mean, if we have to meet, you know, this is, this is changing, seems hour, by hour, day by day. So if we need to huddle up, you know, and make an adjustment on the fly and audible, we will. Okay. How about Ms. Stronach?
Hi, I'm hoping that you can hear me.
Yes, you're good.
Okay. So I know that this is disappointing, and obviously, it's not something that we want to do, but it is a necessity, and I am very pleased with the recommendation, the way it was presented, and thank the Town Clerk's Office and the Town Manager, and especially putting the 20-day in our tickle file is a good idea, so that we don't miss the deadline in case we have to move it again. Thank you.
Very good. How about Mr. Brian Dick?
I guess I'm curious why it's the, the 16th and not earlier. And I don't know if you explained that, Mr. Montori, but it seems like it's a month and, almost a month and a half.
Yeah, we just, Frank, it was just based on how long we think things might be going the way we are, and the need to adjust for registration and absentee ballots and any other things we may need to do in the Clerk's Office, because none of us know if this is going to be over in a week, week or two, or three weeks. So we just want to give ourselves enough reading. There's no magic to the, to that, other than, other than not knowing how much longer we have to go like this.
And that's from input from our clerk, I'm sure.
Absolutely. No, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, that's, I was just wondering why so far out, but I can understand that. So, other than that, you know, I think it's, it's, it's the right move. And I'm sure we'll, next thing we have to do is move the town meeting, because that's the week before that, right? Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. And the only thing, Richard, I had a question for, it was from residents, is the ballot, I'll just say it, is the ballot locked and loaded? For instance, can the ballot change in lieu of us delaying it? So that was one, a few questions from the residents, meaning is the ballot already set?
Ballot's already set.
Okay. Perfect. That's all I had. And like I said, that was from the residents. So what I look for, let's, let's, let's look for a motion here to follow Mr. Montori's recommendation of moving the election to May 16th, 2020. Same hours, right, Mr. Montori? Eight to eight?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I'm looking at a form of a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Crapman made the motion. Do I, do I have a second?
Second, second now.
I have a second by Ms. Stronach. So why don't we do a roll call? So let's start, how, Ms. Wellman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Crapman?
Aye.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Ms. C M R Stronach?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, unanimous, 5-0. All right, that brings us to the 7:15 scheduled item here. Not bad, at 7:21. So this is the annual town meeting, which was set for May 4th, 2020, and the special town meeting, which is set for May 6th, 2020. So, Mr. Montori, same deal here. You just want to give us your, your, your current recommendations?
Sure. So this is a bit trickier than the, the election. Legislation has not passed yet that would allow the selectmen to move annual town meeting.
Mr. Montori, Mr. Montori, one second. Ms. Stronach, can you, or Brian, can you help Ms. Stronach with the little red microphone there by her name? We're just getting a lot of background noise. Perfect. All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Montori, go ahead.
So, as I mentioned, town meetings are a little trickier for us, because the bylaws set when our annual town meeting is. And in order to move that town meeting, it's left to the moderator to do that, and we don't have a moderator. So there is legislation filed that should be voted on later this week that will allow cities and towns, towns, the ability to move their town meetings. And specifically, there's a language in the new legislation to allow the Board of Selectmen to move their annual town meetings in the absence of a moderator. That law has not been passed yet. But I spoke to Town Council today, and we were comfortable having the board vote tonight to follow away. That's subject to legislation passing, allowing the Board of Selectmen to move the date of town meeting, that this board would vote to change, move the town meeting date to June... Let me just open my notes. June 1st, I believe, and June 3rd. So annual will be June 1st and 3rd, and the special will be June 3rd. Does that make sense?
Sure does on my side. So without any further ado, let's open up to the board for questions around June 1st, annual town meeting, and June 3rd for special town meeting. How about Ms. Wellman?
Right now, I don't, I don't have too many questions. The, I think this is a, this is a good move pending the legislation, and hopefully, they will pass it quickly, so we can move it forward, just because we're in a unique situation without a moderator at this point. I may have some questions later about sort of the tactics of town meeting as we go forward in a world where social distancing is a thing. But I don't have any further questions regarding that at this time. Thank you very much. And I'd like to commend the Town Manager for his work on all this, and working with the Town Council. So it's good to our residents and our candidates to know what's going on. Thank you.
Very good. How about Mr. Mark Crapman?
No, I'm just looking up, you know, Richard, do we look at any conflicts with any dates or anything like that that's coming up? I'm just trying to think of something off the top of my head. I know the first week in June tends to have a lot of different things going on. I didn't know if there's any other conflicting dates or anything that goes along with that, or, or anything else that we try to look up. We can just double check, but I just...
Yeah.
...to vote on something, on this important something.
None that I know of, in any dates, anything that's going on now has been postponed itself, even our, it is June. So I haven't heard of any, any things going on. But who knows what's going to, what's going to happen when we get closer to that date?
Yeah, I'm guessing everything else is, everybody else's schedules are going to change, so there's not going to be any perfect date that we're going to be able to work. And if actually, if we select a date, I think other people will probably work around our date for the town election. I just, I just want to, I mean, I want to get as many people there as possible. I just want to make sure we're not conflicting with any other things that are going on. And, you know, obviously, we want as many people at town meeting as possible. But no, I'm fine with that. Thanks.
Very good. How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Montori, it's same time, right? 7:30 for the annual and 7:00 for the special meeting. And then to Mr. Crapman's point, there is a selectmen meeting scheduled for the second. Would you keep that?
Would you, you know, I would keep it there for now, based on all the things that are going to probably need to be done. Once we get through this, you may still need it, but we can decide.
Okay, that's all I have. I think it's great. We're out in front of this. And, you know, we're doing this tonight for the town. So thank you very much. That's it.
All right, how about Ms. Stronach?
I think that my colleagues have said it all. I agree with Jane that as this gets closer, depending on where we are, we're going to have to make some other decisions. And for right now, I'm pleased with all the actions that are being recommended. And again, want to just thank the town department heads, especially our clerk and the Town Manager for working on this. That's it.
Well said, well said. All right, I have no additional comments as well to add. So at this point, I would, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to change the annual town meeting to June 1st, 2020, and special town meeting to June 3rd, 2020, as recommended by the Town Manager.
Yeah, just, just...
With the consideration that the legislation passed is allowing us to do so from, that is a force with the state house.
Perfect. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wellman. All right, let's take a roll call vote. Ms. Wellman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mark Crapman?
Aye.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, unanimous, 5-0. All right, so let's try this. So this is going to bring us to our residence section here. So, Mr. Brian Dorian, have any residents called?
It's Jason. No, no one's called as of yet.
Okay. So why don't we, why don't we move along? And Jason, if a resident does call, maybe just, just, just give the board a ping. I'd like to entertain whatever, you know, never want to skip the residents, that's all. Okay, it just brings us a new business. We covered the, we already covered the, the kind of the COVID-19 updates by Mr. Montori. It brings us to our last agenda item, which is the COVID-19 social media. That's what I put down. I don't know, Mr. Crapman, if you, if, if you want to touch upon the subject? Uh-oh, Mr. Crapman?
Jay, Mary, can you hear me?
Yep, now you're good. Yes, you're good.
You were going in and out, so I, could you just repeat that? Because I got a little static going back and forth. What was that again?
For the COVID-19 social media? I don't know if you had anything to add on, Mr. Montori?
Oh, I definitely do. I requested to have this brought up. I'm sure a lot of us have heard and discussed a lot of things that are going on in our community. And the biggest issue, one of the biggest issues I have is information being put out, it's false information. I mean, we, I mean, everybody in this country has freedom of speech, and I believe we should, obviously, I'm a big fan of that. But there's also, people have to use common sense. And I'm, I've unfortunately seen a number of things that have been posted on the social media, that have been putting things out that have created fear and worry in our community, and, and known for a fact that they're not true. There was specifically some posts out claiming that students had come back from the trip from Italy, and that they were spreading the virus throughout the town and creating fear, and honestly, you know, segregating some of our students and making them victims of just this, you know, posts that are going out there. Everybody, like I said, has a right to free speech and saying what they want. But some of these things, I think it's just overboard, and they shouldn't be allowed in the community.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Krabman. So, um, I, I don't know if any of the board have additional comments? How about, let's just go, let's just go right down the list quickly, and if you have comments, great, if not, that's fine, too. How about Ms. Wellman?
Uh, thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Krabman, for bringing up the topic. Um, that one in particular has been very problematic for a lot of families in this community. Um, I think it's important for people to remember that for the individuals who are battling this virus, that we maintain our compassion for their concern, just like we would anybody else who has, um, uh, the flu, or is battling any other illness. Um, and there have been a number of people who have demonstrated, um, kind of reprehensible behavior, um, in this community, and, and been interested in sparking fear, um, which isn't really helpful, and, um, and has caused, um, collateral damage, one might say. So I do appreciate, Mr. Krabman, that you brought that up. Um, it might be useful at some point, um, at least on the town side. Uh, I wanted to say that, uh, the town manager did a great job. Um, they've, they've been updating the website, and they keep doing those things, and, and perhaps adding an FAQ about town-specific things might be useful. I don't know that rumor, you know, shooting down rumors is useful, but I'm giving people links and reminders about where to find factual information, um, how to secure their own, um, their own health and safety, uh, is useful. And so I know there's a lot of resources already up regarding that. So I think it's really important. I think social media is a powerful tool that we can use, um, to help keep our first responders safe, to help keep our elders safe, um, to help keep our community in general safe. That's why we're doing this video conference. And I think everybody's working really hard to respond to, uh, a fluid situation, as you said, Mr. Kelly. Um, so I appreciate all the efforts and, um, and the efforts of the residents who are working very hard to make masks in this community. We have, uh, small businesses that are working hard to do those things, um, to, uh, take, take food to their neighbors, to, um, all, there's, there's a lot of real good, heartwarming things that we're doing right here in Tewksbury to help our neighbors. Um, and I'd like to see more, I like seeing all of that. That is, that is the good news in what is, um, a very anxious situation for many of our residents. So thank you.
Okay, how about, uh, Mr. Brian Dick?
Uh, nothing else to add.
All right, how about Ms. Stronach?
I have nothing to add, and I just appreciate everybody's compassion during this time because it is very anxious for individuals, so, thank you.
All right, very good. I have nothing to add as well. So it brings us down to, uh, Jason, I'm gonna try one more time. Anything, any residents to call in, or any residents at all call in?
Uh, nope, sorry, no calls yet.
Okay, this is the first go at it. We'll have to, maybe just, as we're all, it's a learning process for all. So hopefully, next time, maybe we'll have some residents dial in, um, you know, with this new format, if we continue to do the teleconference bridges. So I think that really concludes, um, all business for this evening. I don't think there's any minutes. So why don't we jump last but not least, um, I'm not sure if anyone's had any board member reports, but let's start there. How about Ms. Wellman?
Uh, no, the, all of the subcommittees I'm on are meeting either remotely or not at all. Um, NIMCOG sent the warrant to us, uh, last week, and then we mail in the warrant so we can pay people, and this is the information we're getting from NIMCOG right now. So I brought a visual aid to the meeting. But no, uh, most important thing right now is to stay on top of what's going on in the world, and stay safe with our families, and, um, do the best we can at home. So thank you.
Okay, perfect. How about Mr. Mark Krabman?
Uh, no, obviously, uh, one of the things that I, I would like to, uh, talk with Brian and Richard, I know there are a number of, of boards that may need to get together and discuss, uh, certain things. So, um, if we're able to make this, uh, the WebEx system available for other boards and committees to get together and discuss, um, you know, port matters before the town. I, I know, as soon as this is over, I can't wait to call my economic development team together to help the businesses in our community. We're gonna need to rally together and help small businesses in a big way. And, uh, we, you know, let's get through this crisis, and then we're gonna really need to work together to make everything work and get everybody, uh, back on their feet in our community. So, uh, I would like to be able to discuss this with my board members and, uh, and get them ready. So when this is over, we're ready to help out and do the best we can. And to that point, I know we discussed about the social media part of it. I think when we're, I think we are in the process, that usually around this time is when we re, uh, uh, reappoint, uh, people to their boards and committees. So, uh, we'll have to have, have discussions on that, on how we're, how people are gonna reply to reappointing to boards and committees. It's usually right after the election as well. And, uh, we'll have to figure out certain ways to get those things through. And I'd like to bring up the social media part of that. If we're appointing somebody to one of our boards and meetings, that should be one of our questions, is that, you know, uh, we don't, we want to make sure that people who are public officials or people that are representing this town are making sure that they're pointing people in the right direction and get the correct information of what's going on during a crisis. And I, the town website is the best place to get that. You can go to the CDC website, but, uh, you know, Richard and our town nurse and everybody else at Board of Health has been putting out, uh, information. So I just want everybody to continue to log on and check that information as it comes available. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to add, other than just a quick comment on how, uh, proud I was to participate in a collaborative effort last Friday, the 20th, with the Board of Health. I thought, um, you know, when we first met, the Board of Selectmen on that local state emergency, and then last-minute meeting with the Board of Health, uh, we were, you know, this, this whole board was on that meeting as well as the, um, woman Barry and, and his, his group, and that went quite well, uh, last-minute plan. So I just wanna, I think it's great anytime two boards get to collaborate like that, especially in a stressful situation. So hats off to the town of Tewksbury and those two boards. Thank you.
Great call out. How about Ms. Emery Stronach?
Hi, um, thank you. I guess the two things that I would like to say, first of all, and most importantly, and I know that we keep saying this tonight, and everybody has echoed it, we would love to continue to just give big shout-outs to our town employees who have really been working day and night, and especially, uh, town nurse and our public health officials in the Board of Health themselves. Um, they've really been tasked and stepped up to the plate on that. With regards to, um, the events committee, they are meeting virtually. I was unable to attend that. And the elementary building committee, while the committee has not met, the town department heads, as well as the project manager, the architect, and under the guidance of the town manager and superintendent, um, Malone, are still working on that project virtually, and making sure that we don't lose any speed on that. So I just want to, again, thank them for their work on that, and we'll be updating the board soon as this unfolds. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Stronach said it all. I'll drop the virtual mic right now. But, uh, but I just want to get back, Mr. Mr. Montori, um, any, did you have anything else to add? I think we were pretty clean on the town manager side, but did you have anything else to add?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, uh, just quickly, a couple of things. Uh, first, um, just to follow up on something, uh, Mr. Krabman said earlier about, uh, the website. Um, we would encourage, uh, residents to go to the website. They can do a fair amount of town business on the website. There's a lot of good information on our website under our, uh, under the, uh, section, uh, for COVID-19. We would encourage people to sign up for code RED so they can get, uh, alerts, uh, either by text or by phone, as this, uh, crisis is ongoing, but also throughout the year when something is happening in town. Uh, and then finally, uh, we added to our COVID-19 section, uh, a link for businesses to get information on how to receive help during this crisis, small businesses especially. And in addition to that, uh, Janine Tamboli has been working on compiled, with a bit of local businesses, and she's compiled a list that will be going up of businesses that provide food delivery and other delivery services to residents. So residents can go on the website, find out what businesses offer those services, and, uh, they can immediately access information for those businesses. Uh, we encourage businesses in the community to contact Janine to get on that list. So we can, even though businesses are closed, they provide some type of service by delivery, uh, they can still function. So, uh, that's something that will be going on the website, uh, 24 hours. And we encourage residents and businesses to, uh, take advantage of it.
All right, perfect. I'll just close just by thanking, uh, telemedia department, both Brian and Jason. Um, not too many technical glitches tonight, so we did good. So hopefully, I think someone might have said it, you know, as we continue through this, if we need to use WebEx or whatever methods to gather, um, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna iron out all the kinks here. So great job, uh, to Brian and Jason. So with that being said, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I'll tell a second, I'm open.
I have a second. Why don't we do a quick, quick roll call, uh, Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman?
Aye.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
And Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
And the chair votes ayes, well. All right, we'll talk very soon. Thanks a million, bye-bye.
Thank you, everyone.